Manana Sizouz, Buenas en Hafade, Totos Hamzu. This hearing by the Committee on Public Accountability, Human Resources, Guam Build-Up, Hagatia Revitalization, Regional Affairs, Public Libraries, Telecommunications and Technology is called to order. It is 8:04 in the morning right now for the record and in accordance with 5 GCA Chapter 8, Subsection 8107, public hearing notices were sent on Thursday, October 27, 2022, adhering to the five-day notice, and a second public notice on Tuesday, November 1, 2022, adhering to the 48 hours prior. In addition, colleagues and ladies and gentlemen, the hearing was noticed on the Legislature's website at www.guamlegislature.com. Written testimonies may be submitted by emailing Senator Munya Barnes at guamlegislature.org or you may hand-deliver to our office at 163 Chalan Sanso Papa, Hagatia, Guam, 96910. Ladies and gentlemen and colleagues, on the agenda is we have a bill, Bill Number 346-36LS, as introduced by Jose Pito Terlahi, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Jose Joe Esten Augustin, Clinton E. Rigel, Selena Cruz Nelson, James C. Moylan, Frank Blas Jr., and V. Anthony Ada, which is an act to amend Sections 8502 and 8503 of Article 5, Chapter 8, Title IV of the Guam Code annotated relative to the defined benefit 1.75 retirement system. Joining me here this morning, to my right, I have Senator Jose Pito Terlahi, who's the author of the bill. To his right is Senator Tony Ada, and to my left, good morning, I have Senator Telo Thank you, colleagues, for joining me here this morning. Before we proceed with the discussion on this bill, I would like to first provide some general rules of conduct for all that are here in attendance, and the conduct of this hearing shall be as follows. Colleagues, I do apologize, I was just told that we're still having problems with our audio. I'm just going to take a moment's recess so that they can fix the audio. We... (pause) (inaudible) 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 (pause)[787.79]
To take the 1.7 Plan, 1.75 Plan, who were given that option originally but chose not to do it, but may have rethought the, 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 the choice. Or those new employees who now coming along, who currently don't have the option to join the 1.7 Plan, would be given the option to do so. Some fairly critical assumptions were made about that. Those may be very valid, I just don't know, and I would certainly like to ask those questions. My very quick view of the cost of this is it's very cost sensitive. A, a very small change in, in assumptions can change the cost quite considerably. So with, with your permission, what I would like to do is spend a little bit more time on this. I will submit on behalf of the Department of Administration, some written testimony. Because I, I would like to take this apart a little bit more. But generally, I, we certainly support any proposal that enhances this, this benefit for, for government and Guam employees. We're talking of some of the people in like 40 years into the future. We want, as I say, and I, I do want to repeat this if I may, that it's to all our benefit, it's to the benefit of Guam, to have the best candidates come into the government of Guam and keep those best candidates. And Department of Administration is committed to that. Thank you, Senators.
You're very welcome, Mr. Byrne, and I truly appreciate you going to take the time to further analyze the actuaries that have been sent to you. And I'm hoping that it would be submitted sooner than later, so thank you very much. With that being said, I will go ahead and proceed with Attorney Stephanie Mendiola. For the record, please just state your name and if you're here in support or not in support of, thank you.
Hafeday, Zamanasid, Zouz, Vice Speaker Barnes, members of the committee, senators. Yes, for the record, my name is Stephanie Mendiola. I'm the Deputy Attorney General for the Division of General Counsel at the AG's office. I'm joined this morning with our Chief Investigator, Tony Blas. Piggybacking off of Director Byrne's position, we are in support of the, of the overall intent of the bill. Our 200 employees certainly share in the desire to attain of the most beneficial retirement option plans for them. This morning, we're here to advocate for our law enforcement officers. Our concern with Bill 346 as it's currently drafted is that our law enforcement officers at the AG's office are excluded. So in short, we're just asking that they be included, as I understand it was not the intent to exclude them. We have provided written testimony, I can read that into the record if you'd like, but that's the gist of, of the request. And the confusion may perhaps stem from the use of the term "uniformed personnel", as it's used interchangeably with law enforcement officers, but legally and functionally, the two terms are not interchangeable. And so we just ask that the committee consider how to revise the bill to include that. And we've provided some options for your consideration. I understand the sponsor's office and the committee are, are willing to work on that. Would you still like me to read the testimony into the record? Okay, sure.
Yes, please, thank you.
Tahtik W. Hafeday, Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony expressing our qualified support of Bill 346. We support the overall intent of the bill and our approximately 200 employees share the desire of their colleagues in public service to avail of beneficial retirement plan options. Our concern with the bill is that it excludes our investigators, who are law enforcement officers, or LEOs, from the proposed option in Section 7 for early retirement. In its introduced form, Section 1 of Bill 346 reflects the legislature's intent to align Gov Guam's DB 175 Plan with the majority of retirement plans across the nation, to the extent that a government retirement plan should account for the shorter life expectancies of LEOs. This finding of shorter life expectancies is based on the particularly strenuous conditions of police work. Perhaps unintentionally, the relevant language within Section 1 is inconsistent with the corresponding provision in Section 7. It appears what is at issue may be a confusion of quote "uniformed personnel" unquote, as law enforcement officers. Legally and functionally, these terms are not interchangeable. For example, OAG investigators and perhaps Port Police Officers, or LEOs, are not uniformed personnel. On the other hand, entomologists, commodity inspectors, and security personnel are quote "uniformed personnel", but are not LEOs. We recognize that the term "uniformed personnel" was already defined and used in the Retirement Chapter of the Code. However, it is our understanding that there is not and was not, there is not and was not an intention to exclude our LEOs. We further understand and have received assurances that the sponsor and the committee will work to ensure that the bill is amended accordingly. To that end, we offer some options for consideration. First, to amend Section 7, Page 8, Lines 12 to 14, to add the phrase "or who is a designated investigator at the Office of the Attorney General" after the term "uniformed personnel". Alternatively, to amend the bill to replace all references to "uniformed personnel" with Category 1 Peace Officers, the definition of which more accurately captures LEO positions. Or alternatively, amend the definition of "uniformed personnel" under 4 GCA 8104 subsection P to include designated investigators of the Office of the Attorney General. We appreciate your consideration and we hope your committee will report out an amended version of the bill that takes these issues into account. Cezar Massey, signed. Stephanie E. Mendiola, Deputy Attorney General, Division of General Counsel. Thank you, Vice Speaker, and in short, that sums up our request, is just to please be sure our investigators are included.
You're very welcome, Attorney Mendiola. I would like to ask, please, if you could give a copy of the written testimony to our committee directors so that we can make sure that we append that to the committee report. Sana Massey.
Estha Manazin.
Okay. Mr. Plons, if you would like to add anything to that, you're welcome to proceed at this time.
Yes, my name is Anthony Blas. I'm the Chief Investigator with the Office of the Attorney General. Prior to that, I was a police officer at the Guam Police Department. I am also a retired Coast Guard Investigative Service Special Agent, which does federal law enforcement type of, of work. But I support the testimony made by my colleague here, Attorney Stephanie Mendiola. And I just want to, just, just reiterate that our job as OAG investigators is strangest type of police work. Although we're not uniform, we are law enforcement officers. We conduct criminal investigations, conduct surveillance, we collect evidence, do search and seizures, make arrests, interview victims and suspects. So in essence, we work just like police officers, however, in a more specific nature within the Attorney General's office and to provide support to the Attorney General of Guam. Thank you. I'm open to any questions.
You're very welcome, Mr. Blas, thank you very much. And if you too have anything written, you're more than welcome to submit to the committee director. Mr. Guevara, I will now acknowledge you.
My name is Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, Senators Duñez, Ada Terlahi, and Taidwi. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to provide oral testimony in support of this bill. I'm currently with the Guam Police Department, have about 24 years of service. I'm supportive of this bill, but I was wondering if we could provide a amendment to the bill under Section 7, under 12, I mean 13, correction, Plan members, who is a member of the Uniform Personnel, or is a active employee, on or after 1 January 2024. I was wondering if we could revise that to fiscal year, instead of 1 January 2024 to October 1, 2023.
Is that your only issue of concern, Mr. Guevara?
Ma'am, this has been a, a long time, you know, Senator Terlahi has proposed this, the bill was passed to provide money to do this bill. And then it was sent, a few months, it was sent to the retirement to do the study, and then it's been a while, and I was wondering if we could...
Yes.
I mean, would you could, speed up the process, if you don't mind.
Thank you very much, Mr. Guevara. I truly appreciate your testimony, your oral testimony here this morning. I will note for the record, colleagues, that we do also have more members who have walked in, but do not wish to provide oral testimony, but just give their support. Mr. John, that looks like a Perez. John Perez. Joni V. H. Terlahi. Roger B. Deles Rages. Carl J. Lozama. Joseph Rivera. Peter Santes. And Jesse, that looks like an Akfaji. Is that an Akfaji? All here in support of, but just wanted to show their support for this effort. Also, ladies and gentlemen, also joining us, good morning, Senator Jawan Brown, thank you for coming in this morning. There is nobody else wishing to testify at this time. I will open the floor to my colleagues. Before I do that, I, I again will just reiterate the committee's intent of this measure, which in, as noted in 346 S36, it increases the accrual rates to 2.75% a year after 25 years. It opens the hybrid plan to existing employees during a six-month enrollment period. It also has, opens the plan to new employees. It allows uniformed personnel to retire at an age of 55 with at least 25 years of service, or 57 years with at least five years of service. I will say that the reason is this, the bill is based off the findings from a study conducted by the Government of Guam Retirement Fund and authorized through Bill 137-36, which is introduced in May 2021. The genesis of the bill was to find a way to allow uniformed personnel to retire earlier, considering studies that find uniformed personnel have a shorter lifespan on average. That's the, the, my personal take on this measure, one of the measures that I'm in support of and appreciate the proposed considerations of amendment. We'll take it up with the committee. So at this time, to the author, Senator Terlahi, any questions or comments to the panel members?
Not a question, but I just want to go back to Ms. Mendiola's point. You know, when we were doing this, this bill, I was just concentrating on the general term of law enforcement. And I know that I should have put in the non-uniform. So rest be assured, Madam Mendiola, that your recommendation would be made on an amendment. Once this get to the floor, I will make that amendment to include non-uniformed police officers. And I want to thank you very much. We, we will consider your, your statement on making the changes on, I think, Section 7. So we're going to work on that, and probably if you give us your telephone number, we'll give you the results of the, the committee's recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Terlahi. Senator Ada, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions, Madam Chair. Just like to thank the panel for being here to provide their testimony, and we look forward for this bill to moving forward and hopefully seeing the session floor before the end of this term. Thank you.
Thank you. I will at this time acknowledge, I do apologize, I should have acknowledged them first. Minority Leader, Senator Duñez, any comments or, or statements or questions?
That's okay, Madam Chair. We can go in order, maybe of those who are here.
I'm just yielding to...
Okay, thank you.
To protocol.
So Madam Chair, thank you, thank you for the opportunity, and nice to see everyone here this morning. And you know, as the Director of Department of Youth Affairs, I certainly saw firsthand for over eight years what all law enforcement goes through in terms of the stress that is associated with serving in law enforcement. And I, as many of you in, in blue and otherwise throughout the law enforcement families, I know that we've attended far too many memorial services. You know, for those who, who really, I, I've seen this firsthand in terms of what the stress of the job can do in terms of family life and in terms of quality of life and, and the like. So certainly, this has merit. I want to look a little bit more into the study as well. But another thing, in terms of recruitment and retention, and I appreciate the testimony that you had, Mr. Byrne, I just wanted to see if I could get a, a confirmation on... I've heard from many folks in terms of those that are going in to apply through Department of Administration, that when you're looking at the various law enforcement entities, a lot of times, they're actually referring people down to GPD because it's not right now the most desired law enforcement. Let's just be honest, right? It's tough on the streets right now. And it's a tough job. And I just wanted to see if I could get confirmation with the fact that there is a lagging opportunity of recruitment under GPD than other uniformed services.
Thank you, Senator. Yes, it is more challenging to recruit the, the full complement that we need at GPD than some of the other law enforcement agencies. As you just pointed out, you know, I, I think it's perceived as being more perilous, or potentially more perilous, than some other positions. And anybody contemplating a law enforcement job should certainly seriously consider what that is going to do to their lives, and, and since this is a pension issue, over a long period. Maybe, maybe I should also say that I don't think that some people outside the government fully appreciate how hard all government workers work. I recently, it wasn't law enforcement, but I recently had an employee who we recruited in a supervisory position from the private sector, who only stayed with us a short time. And I think it was principally because of the workload and the responsibility, although it was carefully explained at the time of the interview, the responsibility that was being taken on. With the Police Department, that's a huge responsibility. And so, yes, you are correct, it is more challenging.
I'm, I'm glad I got a chance to get that confirmation on the record, because that's, that's what I've been hearing, and I think now more than ever, we need to make sure that recruitment, retention, and the capability to quickly enhance our forces is something that's moved on, considering the concerns we have in our community. So I just want to continue to watch this bill through the process. And, and like I said, I, I really think that we can, and many of us have seen that what, what stress levels and the like exist throughout law enforcement. And so I certainly look forward to the advancement of this bill, and, and certainly, I think it will enhance and maybe change some minds in terms of those who would, you know, consider a career. Particularly as well, and I think many of our men in blue and those that have seen the outmigration, you know, it may be that one benefit too, that keeps people from going to federal service, because right now, we know federal service is the most attractive job for law enforcement to move to throughout all of the disciplines, just because of the pay scales, as well as, you know, the manpower is typically held at much more adequate levels. And so that in and of itself as well reduces the stress, but you know, maybe this could make a decision for some to say, while federal service is attractive, I, you know, this might make me stay. So I certainly see the merits of it, and I want to, you know, I'm encouraged, and I want to just watch it as it passes through the process to see what the final product looks like. But to all law enforcement brothers and sisters, you know, we have my support, certainly. Cezar Massey, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Minority Leader. Senator Duñez, I do want to note for the record that the Government of Guam Retirement Fund was provided an invitation to be here for this meeting. They did send a message also to the author of the legislation that they would like to wait to submit a, a final testimony after their board meeting, which is within the week. They will submit written testimony in reference to this bill. They didn't want to be premature without getting the consensus of the board. So thank you very much. At, at this time, I will acknowledge Senator Telo Taidwi, please, for your questions or comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning to my colleagues, and definitely good morning to those who are here to testify. I was sitting here before, talking about the same scenario when it comes to retrain, you know, not retraining, but the burnt out of, of police officers, you know, and anybody in public safety. I remember sitting and discussing that and the importance of it. Much data was provided to ensure that not just Guam participate in this, but other jurisdictions have been doing this for quite some time. And it's very important, considering what we're dealing with today on our island, with all the crime that's happening. Retention of police officers are very important, you know, and if, if we can get them to stay a little bit longer, you know, to provide that benefit, then definitely I'm in support of it. My only concern is, you know, this, this bill is important, you know, it moves something that was actually, a bill that was introduced to, on the DC 175, that was actually mandated, basically repealed, and then later on brought in, but now we're looking at it again, but it, it's, it's very confusing, where are we at, DC or DB? You know, Mr. Byrne, your testimony today kind of concluded that you needed more time to look at this, assess this. And I really ask, encourage you that you do so with data and information, but most especially when you do this, you need a physical note. We all agree that anytime we have a public hearing, that we have a physical note present in front of us, so we can see the impact. I don't have a physical note in front of me for this bill. And it's important that if we're going to move on something as important as this, that we have a physical note, that there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it, that we move directly in this path of ensuring our public safety officers, uniformed or non-uniformed, is, is addressed correctly, and not just for the sake of what, you know, a few days before an election. It, it needs more attention than that, and not for any other reason. Because I, I truly believe in this, this bill, but I also want to be fiscally responsible too. I know you mentioned, Mr. Byrne, about having a, you know, other people working in the Government of Guam, and it's very stressful. But right now, I think we need to really concentrate on our public safety officers, and the call of their concerns and needs in retaining is, should be out in the forefront. Forty percent of the public, forty percent, compared to 12, 13, 17, on other areas in the public they're concerned about. This is the first time in history that public opinion of forty percent is worried about our public safety. So that being said, you know, all my questions are basically for the retirement to answer, and it's, but then again, Mr. Burns, I'm just going to try asking a couple of questions I had, if you can, if you can, I understand, I, I know this is not your area, but you know, according to the bill, as of September 30th, 2021, there were 7,070 active members in the DC Plan. 1,226 active members in the DB Plan, and 2,994 active members in the DB Plan, DB 1.75 Plan. How many of the 7,070 active members in the DC Plan were eligible to transfer to the DB 1.75 Plan but chose not to do so prior to the plan's effective date on January 1st, 2018?
Thank you, Senator. I don't recall the exact numbers, but from memory, it was about a third of the eligible employees who chose at that time to opt for the 1.75 Plan rather than remain in the, in the DC Plan.
About one-third. Of the 7,070 active members in the DC Plan, how many are uniformed personnel who were eligible but decided against transferring to the DB 1.75 Plan?
Senator, I, that, that number I don't have, but I think the 7,000 number is what it is now, not what it was in 2018, when the, when they were able to make that choice.
Okay, but you don't know on the Uniform Personnel section, okay, so that would be very helpful. I'm, I'm asking these questions so that maybe when you're doing your, your testimony, providing your written testimony, you can incorporate that. You know, it said also, Mr. Byrne, that one of the public statements issued in the introduction of this measure, best of, and it quotes, "Best of all, this improvement of, in benefits will cost the employee an additional contribution and only costs government roughly 0.14% or about 230,000 annually." So does the 230,000 annual fiscal impact cover all new costs in the government, which are tied to increasing the DB 175 retirement annuity from 1.75% to 2.75%, and to permitting uniformed personnel of the DB 1.75 Plan to retire after reaching the age of 55 or 57, as provided in the bill?
That, Senator, is what I have to look into.
Okay, so if you can answer that question in your testimony, I really appreciate that.
It's not, it's not actually listed on any of these, or in any part of the actuary report. You have to be able to pull those numbers out, and that is what I intend to do.
Also, with the amendments proposed in the bill, does the Retirement Fund expect uniformed personnel in the DB 175 to make significant contributions to their plans by the age of 55 or 57? Ensuring benefits are not reduced at any time during their retirement?
Again, this is my best understanding, Senator, that everybody makes the same contribution, whether they work in law enforcement or not. And therefore, I don't think there's going to be any special contribution for law enforcement.
Okay, well, I, I think that's something else I'd, I'd like you to address in your testimony, so that everyone here, especially the uniformed personnel, would know what they're up against, you know? So other than that, this bill's referral, I have a concern with the bill's referral into this committee. It should be under retirement or, or under appropriations, and it's in the wrong committee, so I'm, I'm making that for the record. I've submitted a letter, not only to the Oversight Chair of this committee, but also to the media to question why this bill is being heard in this committee. So for the record, it's in the wrong committee. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Telo. Before I move on to my other colleague, I'd like to note for the record that a formal request was, again, asked by the Office of Bureau of Budget and Management. We just received the information, and I will note for the record, I'd ask that Sergeant Guam, please, share with my colleagues. Based on BBMR's statement, this request was just done on November 3rd, and just submitted to us right now. And relative to the cost impact on government in Guam using the total expected payroll, DB and DC Plan members reported in the actuary evaluation as of September 30th, 2021, and the current employer's contribution rate at, of 28.43%, DB and DC employer contribution would increase by approximately 220,000 to 230,000 per annum from the respective payroll sources. We just received this from BBMR, so, and my colleagues have had it, and it will be at the table for anybody's review. at the table for anybody's review. Senator Brown, you may proceed. Good morning.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, it's easy four days before an election to say, "No problem, we got you covered. This is what you want, we're going to give it to you." But I have to tell you, I think we need to make sure we have the information to make responsible decisions. It's easy to promise. I don't promise. It's never been my record in the time I've been in elective office. You know, right now, we're well aware that our community is very concerned about the level of crime. They don't feel safe. I'm sure probably those of you that are uniformed officers out there don't feel safe, probably, performing your jobs. I want to proceed in a responsible manner because I think very much we need to address and prioritize, and when we prioritize, sometimes we have to make tough decisions. It's easy to sit here, "God, gotcha." And yet, those of you that have been around long enough, and I've been around long enough, this is my 34th year in government. You know, we promise you one thing, and then you don't have the equipment, the resources, the additional personnel you need out there to do the job. You deal with the BS, the nonsense, the people that get promoted over you that didn't earn it because they're connected. I mean, the list goes on. And at some point, I hope our community is fed up enough that they want to see responsible leadership, and they want to ensure that what is really a priority that they want to address is actually addressed. Recently, through the governor's decision, which the legislature seems to fall in line right after, you know, you got a pay raise, but you got a cross-the-board pay raise that didn't prioritize police officers out there in the field. And we know other law enforcement that you might look and go, "Wow, they got more pay than me," and they're not out on the street dealing with the issues that I'm dealing with. And I'm hopeful that in the next term of the legislature, certainly if I'm fortunate enough to be there, I want to see how do we prioritize the most critical issue right now that our people are very concerned about? Because I've lived on Guam most of my life. This is the most unsafe and uncomfortable I've ever felt and my family's ever felt in this community. What more for those of you that are going out there that are supposed to be protecting us? I understand the desire because, heck, I'm at the age, I feel the aches and pains. I understand that. And what can we do to prioritize? But I was also there when the late Speaker Joe T. San Agustin, who's been very active in his tenure with regards to the retirement fund. We had the debate on the floor of the legislature. That's why the original defined benefit plan was phased out because the government of Guam, the taxpayers of Guam, the people of Guam could not afford long-term to sustain it. Those of us that were fortunate enough to be there at the time, lucky us. Anybody after a certain date, you got to go on the new defined contribution, and not only are you challenged in that new plan, it's not as beneficial, and you got to work longer. And everybody got swept up in that, whether you were in law enforcement or not. So, I think we need to look at how we're going to address and how we're going to provide incentives for law enforcement that's going to be beneficial to the public and beneficial to those of you that choose to stay or new up-and-coming that want to join the Guam Police Department. Certainly, I want to see more people come and join the Guam Police Department because obviously there's a need in our community. It's unfortunate. It's sad because we've seen the changes of where things, where the crime rate on Guam is continuing to grow, and the source of the problem continues to not be properly addressed. So, I think we need to look at that, but I'm going to want specific information. I'm disappointed the retirement fund is not here because they're the key people I want to talk about. Because while our colleagues may want to say, "Yes, I'm going to give this to you," I'm going to want to know the impact on how is it going to affect thousands of others that are currently retired? What is the security of their retirement? Of course, I want to know the security of my retirement. You're going to want to know the security of your retirement. We also got thousands of other people out there that are retired. I want to know if GovGuam is behind in any payments to the retirement fund because it's not uncommon to hear what's not paid sometimes or what's delayed is the payment to the retirement fund. And if the money ain't going in, what do you expect to come out? So, those are things that I need to make the decision on, and I think you need to look and scrutinize very carefully, those of us that sit up here. Right now, it's all good because, man, it's four days before an election, and I want your vote, and I'm going to, no problem, I'm going to pass this. But we need to look at what the financial implications are. Is it affordable? Can the taxpayers of Guam afford the difference? If it's only, you know, just a few thousand dollars, no big deal. But I think those things need to be outlined to us, and I think more importantly, they need to be outlined to you so that you actually do know that you're going to have a secure retirement. Because many people in many other places, even with their retirement plans, have no guarantee that they're going to have a retirement plan that's going to sustain them on what now, in some cases. In some cases, we're seeing people who are living longer. I don't, and never have wanted to run to be the captain of the Titanic. It's never been my ambition. I want to make sure that we're being responsible with the decisions we're making. It's fiscally responsible, and it can be sustained long-term, not just for the next election because we're insignificant to that long-term process. And until we get those answers, I want to see those answers. You know, I understand the dynamics of why this is all being discussed now, today. I mean, you know, all of a sudden, we get the fiscal note at the last minute. You know, guys, come on, put two and two together. It's not that complicated to figure this out. But I think we need to make responsible decisions and have this information because I'll tell you, if it's you today, who's it going to be tomorrow? Are going to be professors at the university? It's going to be the teachers? Where does the list stop? It ain't going to be, it ain't going to end with you. Everyone else is going to say, "Wait a minute, what about me? I don't want to work till I'm 70. I want to retire too." And can the taxpayers of Guam afford it? I'm asking the tough questions, I'm making the tough statements because this is a reality. And I think we need to know that information and be responsible about it because I'm sure you're going to want to ensure you have a secure retirement. Because it's not just you, it's everybody else that's already retired. There's those that retired 20, 30 years ago that are depending on their retirement check. And we need to make sure that it's fiscally sound and fiscally responsible and can be sustained and that the government's ensuring that it's paying its share. Because I don't want to retire and find out that, you know, down the road, it's in jeopardy because the government of Guam still owes money to the retirement fund. And is it properly being invested? So, I think when we get answers to those questions, I'll be a lot more comfortable. But I will tell you, I am open. I'm looking forward to the next term because when I see these across-the-board decisions being made and not prioritized, and sometimes it's hard to say, "Yes," certain things in our community are more important than others. Our people expect certain things to be prioritized. Definitely law enforcement, definitely our police officers that are out there in the field, that I want to see prioritized because there are positions in government that are in your related field that make far more, that don't do nowhere near or have the dangers that are involved in what, even to the point now, and I don't know the specific of some of these cases, but you could be out on your job, and my goodness, then you're charged because you executed your duty. And if they argue you did it differently or wrong, my goodness, you could be charged. So, I don't think it's an easy job, but I want to make sure we're doing it responsibly. And I want to make sure that our retirement collectively secured for everyone because there's many thousands, like I said, that are not here in this room right now that we have a responsibility to. And how can we prioritize and incentivize so that the area that our people are telling us is critical, you guys are critical, that we're actually putting the resources there? Not just in the retirement, but in the day-to-day job to make sure you have the equipment you need, that you have the additional personnel you need out in the field. When we give you a police car, you know, it's up to standard. It's there, you know, not because we want to get our favorite, you know, whatever. And when we see and hear things like that, it's just, it's totally unnecessary. So, I'm open to this, but again, I want specifics, and I think we need the retirement fund to be here to ask these questions because, hey, we're all in the same boat. It's not just those of you in law enforcement that say, "Hey, at 55, I want to be able to retire." It's everybody else that's already retired before you, and I want to make sure we have answers to that. And then I want to make sure, how do we move forward to prioritize? Because if the next legislature does not prioritize addressing the public safety aspect, I think the public is going to, like, have its fill of all of us. And so, I look forward to doing that in the upcoming term. I also look forward, should I be there, of making sure that we have that dialogue, not just this, but we sit down and actually have the dialogue so that we can actually get feedback. What are the most critical needs you have? How can we address it? Some is money, some is management, others is resources. I think we need to focus and prioritize that because if you're not incentivized, if you don't feel good about what you do, if you don't feel professional about what you do, we're not going to get the best from you. I think that's fair, and I think our people have an expectation. I think that's, if there's nothing in this election that we haven't heard, we've heard it clear enough. We know it ourselves in our own lives, in our own families, your lives and your own families, that we need to prioritize public safety. But I want to make sure, whereas we move forward, that it's, that what we're giving is a sure thing. Because there are reasons why the government of Guam left the defined benefit plan. It's a very clear financial reason as to why we left. And we need to be clear also, if we're going to go back and opening up these doors, where does it begin and end, and can we afford it? Because, my dear people, the money that's been floating around all over the place, my colleagues just came out of, you know, a budget hearing where there are millions of dollars left and right, random appropriate, "Let's move 10 million here and 20 million there." They didn't give it to you. Got to ask yourself, why not? What 20 million dollars could mean? 10 million, five, must say, five million. So, please, scrutinize very carefully the promises that are being made. Don't expect just the promises four days before an election. You know, look long-term. What is the actual benefit so that not just for you, those of you that may be looking at retiring in the near future, but those that are to follow? Are we making a better system that's going to give the incentive of wanting to not just be in the Guam Police Department, but how do we sustain that? And how do we address the other key issues that perhaps are limiting you in your ability to perform your job? And I think when we look at that more holistically, I think we're going to have a better outcome. And I look forward to the dialogue because I think one of the early things we must do once this term's over with this current legislature is I think we need to sit down and have that dialogue because I do want to hear what those issues are, concerns beyond just this retirement issue. I know this is important, and I'm sure we'll get the answers that we need to it, but I think there's more, there's no doubt in my mind, there's more that needs to be looked at, and we know we need to put the politics aside, you know. God, after a while, even I get tired of it. And really get down to the brass tacks of what it is that we need to do on our end collectively, what do we need to do with you so that we can ensure that we have the level of support in public safety, and also the morale and interest in wanting to continue the work that you do because the work you do is very important. But I can't add anything more than that to relay on this issue, but please, scrutinize very carefully. I know what it is you're asking for. I can totally empathize and understand that. I just want to make sure we're making the responsible decisions, and I want to make sure that as we move forward, especially in the new year, that we actually get down to what the real issues are so that we can help support you do your job better. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Brown. I do apologize, colleagues. I do have more people who've come in after the meeting, the hearing has started. At this time, walking in is Ronnie. Gumares, yes. Would you like to present oral testimony, sir, or just in support of? Thank you, thank you very much. I will note, in support of or to provide oral? While that is being worked on with the committee, I would note for the record that...
Vice Speaker Barnes?
Yes.
We're talking to retirement. When this was in study, we provided a statement saying that we're willing to increase our percentage of pay to retirement. Would they ask us for suggestions? And if they say that they lack money, we provided, they say we're willing to, when it was a law enforcement bill, they say we're willing to increase our pay. So, I don't know what their problem was, if, why they should have any problems with it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Also, for the record, colleagues, there's a Bernard Atoigui who sent information in support of. There is a Henry James in support of. There is a John Pangolin in support of. Yvonne Cruz in support of. And Ronnie Chiguen Guam Fire in support of. Ladies and gentlemen, there continues to be more coming in. Edward Flores. And we will leave this committee jurisdiction open, this hearing open for a couple of more We also have Maggie Napatie in support of. Or would you like to present oral testimony or just in support of? Daniel Atoigui in support of. Edward L. Flores in support of, and Ron Santos in support of. Anybody here in the audience who would like, we have almost a full house, who would like to present oral testimony or just in support of? Attorney Santos, I'll recognize if you'd like to come to the panel. You would, would you like to present oral testimony or in support of? You? Mr. Santos, go ahead and state your name for the record and if you're, where you're from, and if you're in support of or not in support of the measure.
Good morning, Vice Speaker and fellow, or not fellow, but other esteemed committee members of this committee. My name is Peter Santos. I am from the village of Aggett, and I am in support of this legislation. I used to be under the old plan, and I came back, I was unable to go back into the old plan. But the reason why I'm testifying today is because a lot of the people that I worked with before and a lot of the people that came after me had expressed, you know, a lot of displeasure that the old plan, although understandably was not financially viable, had been eliminated or changed. And one of the things that I, that came to mind was there should have been a carve-out for maybe law enforcement. And I think what this legislation intends to do is try to go back and provide equity. So, there's three things that I think about when it comes to this legislation. One is fairness and equity to law enforcement on Guam because the rest of the nation seems to follow this model. The second is what is it going to do to recruitment and retention of law enforcement? And of course, the third, which Senator Joanne Brown discussed, was what's it going to cost to the taxpayers, right? So, all those things are very important considerations. But we also got to remember too that this is going to be a very limited window. It's going to be optional to people, and it is addressing a specific group of people. I would disagree that you can lump in law enforcement with everybody else. I think law enforcement is a special group and always has been treated as a special group, just like the military. I got my 20-year letter from the military as well, saying, "You've done your 20-year service. Thank you very much." Right? We don't get that with other federal employees. You don't get that with post office employees. You don't get that with human resources employees. It's specific to law enforcement and military. And again, this is optional for those employees, and it's only a limited window. And the cost doesn't seem to be, if the calculations are correct, the cost doesn't seem to be exorbitant. So, that's my comments. Thank you.
You're very welcome, Attorney Santos. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak and present oral testimony at this time? Sir, you may approach the podium or the panel. Please introduce your name for the record and where you're from, and if you're in support or not in support. Sis Massey, please sit.
Hello? Okay, sorry. Thank you. Again, my name is Edward Flores. I'm an employee with the Guam Fire Department. I've been with the Guam Fire Department for 31 years, a little bit over. I am in support of the bill. I see it as three different aspects of the bill that are very appealing, helpful, allowing other employees to, all the GovGuam employees, an opportunity to increase their ability to increase their retirement plan, allowing public safety to retire at an earlier date, a more lucrative date for the age of our firefighters, our police officers, our corrections officers, and also the fact that it would open a window to allow for new employees as well to join in the plan. There's a lot of disparity, I think, with the newer employees under the DC plan, and if they were given an opportunity to participate in a pension plan, I believe that would be very helpful for them. Again, the age of 62 is quite old for a firefighter, for a police officer.
for them. Again, the age of 62 is quite old for a firefighter, for a police officer. The equipment, the stresses make it difficult. Myself, I have many different injuries that I've had over these years. It makes it more and more difficult as I progress in my career, and I'm sure I'm not the only one. So again, I would like to offer my firm's support in this bill, not only will it help public safety, but it also allows for other GovGuam employees an opportunity to build up their retirement and have a more lucrative retirement plan when they do decide to exit the government. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Flores. And before we close, I'd like to just note for the record, again, based on the submission as signed by BBMR...
Madam Chair, there's one other person who wants to testify.
I apologize. Please, sir, thank you very much. Thank you, Senator Atoygui. I did not see that. You're more than welcome. Please state your name for the record, and if you're in support or not in support of the measure.
Hi, good morning. My name is Daniel M. Atoygui. I am in support of this bill. Reason being, like what Chief said, I like what the individual before me said, as you get older, it gets harder to do this job. It gets harder to be a firefighter. Can you imagine a police officer at age 55 having to chase down an 18-year-old criminal? Who do you think is going to win? The 18-year-old. Can you imagine a DOC guard having to control a riot at DOC? Do you think that 55-year-old can handle that? Negative. Can you imagine me having to go up a three-flanks of stairs, having to carry you down or your family members while still trying to fight the fire? Not saying I won't do it, I will do it, but it's going to be hard, and I'm putting myself as a liability as well. The other thing is, we always say paramilitary, parallel to the military. In the military, in the federal fire, they retire you mandatory age 57. Why can't we do the same? As far as money is concerned, if we get retired at age 55, it allows these younger individuals, young family, who are starting out in this world, to have a chance to work and contribute to the government or to society. By keeping us to the age 62, all you're doing is actually increasing what we get paid every year. So yes, I support this bill, and yes, each and every government employee in the hybrid should be given that opportunity, or even in the D.C., to get into this bill that Senator Talahi has put out. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your oral testimony here this morning. Again, just for the record, based on BBMR's, our request to BBMR, the documentation was signed by Supervisor Arthur Mariano on November 1st, signed by Lester Carlson, Director of BBMR on November 3rd, and just received in our office this morning by our committee. So with that being said, thank you all for being here. If there's no one left to testify, the public hearing on Bill Number 346-36LS is introduced by Senator Jose Pito Terlahi, Vice Speaker Tina Rosmundo Barnes, Senator Joe S. Augustine, Senator Clint Rangel, Senator Talina Cruz-Nelson, Senator James Martin, Senator Frank Losch Jr., and Senator V. Anthony Ada, which is an act to amend Sections 8502 and 8503 of Article 5, Chapter 8, Title 4 of Guam Code Annotated, relative to the defined benefit 1.75 retirement system, has been duly heard. Individuals who wish to submit testimony after this hearing may do so by sending it to, by email at senatorsmundo@guamlegislature.org, or they may hand-deliver it to 163 Chalan Sancho Papa, Hagatny Guam, 96910. With that being said, the time right now is 9:20, and this public hearing is now adjourned. Thank you for showing up today.